I was gonna change it to nine o'clock, what are you talking about?
Alright, we'll call the regular meeting, regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees to order Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tam?
Yes.
Mayor Clapp?
Yes, seven members of the little board present, core being established, we're gonna proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda for the record. Today is Tuesday, August eighteenth of two thousand and twenty, we're located at the Sherman Village Hall, four oh one St. John's Drive, here in Sherman. The time is six P M. This is a regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees. So, moving along, and the opening brings us to item number two, we're gonna do this again just because this is a meeting, uh, an official meeting, so I'm gonna ask everybody to stand again, face the flag. This time, we're gonna have Taylor Moore lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and I'll introduce him in a short bit during the meeting, but Taylor, on your cue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we need to set the agenda, because it's been posted forty-eight hours in advance of, uh, of the meeting, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, so we're not gonna have any action items to the agenda. Any trustees seeking recognition for discussion purposes only, seeing none, the chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda. Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Rockford, all in favor, signify by saying aye. If there was a posse, I'd say have it, the agenda's set, clerks report, item number one, the presentation of the July twentieth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes are presented, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, we need a motion to approve the July twentieth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes, Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim, clerk, are you getting all this?
Yep.
So I'm gonna teach you something here, clerk, is there a, and you guys all know this, is there a lead for the attendance roll call? So that's all seven of us voting to accept the minutes by me just asking that instead of individually asking, lead for the attendance roll call? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's seven members voting yes, none voting no, minutes are adopted as presented, presentation of the July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes, any additions or corrections? Any additions or corrections, seeing none, is there a lead for the attendance roll call to pass and adopt these minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, seven members voting yes, and none voting no, the July twenty-first meeting minutes are passed, adopted. Item number three, the presentation of the July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty meeting minutes, any discussion? Corrections? Lead for the attendance roll call to adopt the minutes? Yes? Seven members voting yes, none voting no, those minutes are adopted. Approval of the executive session minutes of July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty. We cannot discuss that, does anybody have any corrections that you could write down on paper and forward to us at this time? Seeing none, is there a lead for the attendance roll call?
Yes.
Okay, seven members voting yes, none voting no, the executive session minutes of July twenty-eighth are adopted. Presentation of the bills for approval, the bills are in your board member packet, any discussion? Seeing none, chair would entertain a motion to approve payment of the bills, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Hahn, I'm sorry, clerk, call the roll on this one, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tam?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, none voting no, the bills are approved for payment. We don't have a treasurer's report.
No, sorry.
No treasurer's report this evening, village engineer has the evening off, he always only gives us, or that's the only thing he gives us, one meeting, but he saves us money, um, so he's not here this evening, and we don't have the village engineer here. Does anybody have any questions under engineering report? The trail, Williamsville Sherman Trail, we accepted the bid, us and Williamsville formally, so, things are moving along. I've been working with Senator Brady's office and Representative Butler's office, uh, as well as Mayor Yocely to try and acquire additional funding to offset both towns' portion of the funding. But we're on the hook for that right now, to the extent that we don't get any of that funding, that's gonna be in the mix in the future. Anything else, oh, under engineering, the engineers went out, so, uh, behind Saratoga Chase, there's a major drainage issue that has been taking place. If you remember, some time ago, we replaced, we had replaced, we inserted, uh, riprap, and this is back when Dave, the world was our engineer, so we kind of made almost like a stair step down, riprap, 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 riprap. But the water's cutting through, it's rushing through this drainage way, it makes its way to the Salmon River, and we're getting emails, video and stuff from the constituents that live along there, trees, that, you know, the root systems are getting washed out and the erosion. It's kind of going around the, uh, riprap, it needs to be addressed, it's a big issue, but we sent a letter out to all the residents that live along there, and plan to address it. The rep, you know, through August and through September, and, anything else?
The real estate project, that in-house.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Public Works did do it. So, and they did it last time. Anything else in there, engineering? Okay, let's move along, we have some other people on the committee tonight. Legal report, anything under legal, nothing under legal, village administrator, nothing, let's go to the president's report, this looks, uh, voluminous, but it should look pretty nicely. The first item, I think we can ratchet do this really quickly, that's our agreement with the Salmon County Hamlet Control. So I told you I was gonna introduce somebody, uh, and that's Taylor Moore, we brought on Taylor Moore, he's the assistant to the village administrator, he has a keen interest in, uh, all things municipal, all things urban planning, things along those lines. He's a Sherman resident, grew up, went through the Sherman Williamsville school system, he reminded me, which I didn't put two and two together when I first was talking to him several weeks back, but I think he came up here with, uh, Jay Tim's, Trustee Tim's son one time. How old were you?
Like fourteen.
Fourteen. Well, Taylor, actually, did you adjourn the meeting?
I did adjourn the meeting, yes.
Adjourned the meeting, so, it made me feel good that they all, we do get the younger generation and kids involved, and, you know, the future leaders of tomorrow, like Taylor, um, that stuff has a lasting impact on them, and so, here he sits today, hopefully that was one of the precursors to the way you are here. So, he's been doing great things, he's very good at research, he's helping Mr. Stratton with a lot of different items, we're so understaffed in the administration, all the administrative side of things, um, but he's here to help, and, um, we'll look for good things out of him, so. Anyway, he's reviewed numerous ordinances, uh, one of the other things, I think he might have took a quick gander on, is this the Salmon County Hamlet Control ordinance? But, uh, that being said, it's kind of a roller plate, we enter into an agreement with them every single year for them to, uh, work with our police department on null and control violations, there's not much to add to this, so, any discussion regarding this ordinance? We have to adopt it in order to enter in the agreement, use their services. Is everybody good to go on this? Okay, so, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance, uh, which is the agreement with the Salmon County Hamlet Control, is there a motion to that effect, Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim, clerk, call the roll, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
And Trustee Tam?
Yes.
Six members voting yes, and none voting no, the ordinance is presented. The next item, item number two, is the authorization to contract with Copper Tree for landscape project at Sherman Village Park. So, we sent out the design concepts regarding this, and the other entities that Mr. Stratton sought bids from, which was Greenview and Hilltop. Hilltop said it's not really in their scope, right?
That's right.
And so, Greenview submitted a plan, Sherman Move works with Copper Tree, and who's the individual?
Mark.
Mark's been very helpful, Copper Tree has put forward a plan, I hope that everybody likes it, I know that, uh, Trustee Gray and Mr. Stratton are pretty excited about it, myself included. But this is to build and install retaining walls on the berms where they meet the playground system. This is more of a functional thing, but it's going to look, it's going to be decorative and look amazing, but it actually has a functioning component to it, and that's to hold that dirt back that's washing over the berms and into, onto, and into the playground area. This is also gonna allow us to capture more surrounding bench seating for families to sit and watch their parent, or watch their kids, um, play on the playground system. Right now, we've got a lot of benches that are just sitting on the path, but we need to get the pads for, but, uh, this will be the retaining walls, holding back the berms and holding back the washout, and then there'll be astroturf around it, so it's no maintenance regarding, uh, you know, the rock beds where kids can kick out or throw rocks and things along those lines, there's no mowing, there's no weeding. They can, uh, this astroturf surface will accompany the benches, will accompany the new planters that Trustee Gray and Sherman Move, and everybody's worked really hard to install, so, um, we need to move forward on this, and it also kind of goes in, and it coincides with the other item that's on here, which is the splash pad. If we do these both tonight, both entities can work in concert together, and, uh, and, and basically, that's what they want to do, right?
Right.
You need to add to this because you've been working with them, so what's the plan?
Uh, the Raindrop and. You guys have seen, you guys have seen the site plan, right, I've sent that out to everyone, I believe, it shows the location of the playground, it'll show where the landscaping area is, and then there's gonna be a, the astroturf area, because by the way, Mark Bigley Williams has already come forward and said, I'm gonna donate all the astroturf to you guys. He's big on help supporting communities, and he loves his community, and he loves what we've done with the playground and this park, so he's really excited, and I think it all started with you. Um, you guys really got him sparked up, and he's really excited about all of our stuff. But anyway, so, uh, Raindrop, which is the company that's, um, we're talking about tonight, that's gonna then path into the south, into the playground, into the splash playground area, which is, uh, part of this tonight, so, having the two of them working brilliantly with one another to transition that perfectly is gonna be key. That's why it's important to pass both of them at the same time. As far as construction time and everything else, fast we pass this tonight, we're looking at landscaping project beginning here, probably within the next month or two, uh, with the completion probably by the fall, Splash Pad could be, um, completed before, uh, probably, he was thinking as early as April of next year, depending on the weather in March, so definitely by the start of summer.
Mike, where is, um, Raindrop, how they come around to work?
Uh, you have the. I think, yes.
Even the.
I think they're, I think they're from Michigan, I think Raindrop's a.
I don't see them from Michigan. So what did he tell you, is construction, start, construction start time?
Some of the stuff can be probably started this year, as far as the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The earthwork and things.
Yes.
And then the installation, he says, is really as fast as we think it is.
Ashland.
Oh, pardon.
Yes, close. Somewhere around there.
House close.
My plan was to call everybody and talk to you about this, but.
They have a more wiki website, you can look at it.
Yeah, look it up, yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's really exciting, it's very.
So we put this, I wanted to talk to everybody individually, and I didn't get a chance to, but Mike's been pushing me because Raindrop's essentially saying that if you don't do this and get this going like now, then you're gonna miss your window of opportunity for us to come, there's so much work out there right now. And getting individuals to, on a job site is almost nearly impossible, um, it's probably gonna get even worse before it gets better. So that all being said, we're trying to move these along together, um, to the extent that we want to do this project, the, the retaining walls are, they're needed, there, it's not even a question, these are all TIF funds, and you all know the status of the TIF and the expiration of it, and how we have discussed on utilizing the remaining funds, and what we essentially are trying to do to create economic development in that area and things for this town, and, you know, just a much greater vibrancy. I just drove up here tonight to come to this meeting, the local park, and it's packed, it's literally packed, and if you watch the nightly news, you know, it's, we're not gonna be moving away from, you know, totally, from restrictions and the free flowing like we, we were, and we could be in this kind of slower going type status for a number of months, uh, maybe a year, maybe two years, who knows what it's going to be? But it would be really nice to have this park continuing to bring people together, us taking care of the functionality of it, the stuff that we actually need, and providing, you know, some more amenities, um, plus it coincides with the expiration of the TIF, we've talked about, you know, other land acquisition and things along those lines, so, um, that's why this is on the agenda tonight, and that's, uh, why we're seeking to try and move it forward, so that we can get this, get these going, get this done in this construction cycle. Because it's very tough getting people to work, that's why we, the reason why we accepted that bike traffic, Mike Trelo, Engineer Trelo is like, you don't accept this, if you think it was high and out, which it was, you waited, you see it on the next, next bid, because of the amount of work with the state's capital plan, and just, you know, what's going on in the entire.
There were only fifty-six states on the list.
Yeah.
State.
Yeah, yeah, so. Did anybody, did everybody have a chance to look at those, the Copper Tree bid, it's significantly less than the Greenview bid, uh, so you've got that going, it's got that going for it right now. Is everybody comfortable with moving forward on this this evening, understanding why we're doing that, and the need for that? I mean, to the extent that we sit on another two weeks for the next meeting, then all things beneficial to us, if, if everybody's, um, being able to pack to, to doing it, so it's kind of a carpe diem, let's just roll. Yes?
Yes.
Discussion, anybody? What's that? Okay, Trustee Gray makes a motion that we authorize to contract with Copper Tree for a landscape project at Sherman Village Park, is there a second? Trustee, who wants it?
You pick.
She has.
Then you pick.
You did?
Trustee Rockford will second that motion, Trustee Long thirds it. Alright, clerk, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tam?
Yes.
Uh, and having received a favorable, uh, vote, I would like to report it as a yes as well, so that'll be seven members voting yes, none voting no, we are authorized to contact Copper Tree and move forward with, with, uh, their bid proposal. And again, it's gonna come in lower even than what they bid, is what, is my, my understanding is, so we'll, we'll have that in force as well. Item number three, this is a bigger item, and it, uh, I'm gonna read it into the record, it's approval of the proposal by Raindrop for the design plans and construction of a splash pad at Sherman Village Park. We, I sent these design renderings to everybody, what, two, three weeks ago? Maybe three weeks ago now, is that what it was?
Yeah, at least, maybe a month.
Maybe a month ago, so I hope you've had ample time to kind of get in there, look at it, think of what you would, uh, suggest or do differently, uh, or think, you know, put your eight to twelve year, or actually, five-year-old, three-year-old, to twelve-year-old, to fifteen-year-old, whatever the age it is, it's gonna be planned in this splash pads park area, um, think about what you would do, what you would like. So, when we met with the individual, the rep from, from Raindrop, we talked about all kinds of different design renderings, and what would be, you know, something outside the norm, give us our own kind of standalone character, and a, make it a destination spot. You know, a lot of places have palm trees that are spraying water, and then buckets that drop water, you know, trains and various things along those lines, and so, we're standing out there, we're walking around, we're talking about the hipper dinner, and he actually brought up the fact that, you know, you could make this a music themed splash pad area. And honestly, my thoughts immediately, that's, that would be pretty cool, um, it's different, nobody else has it, nobody around here, so I said, yes, work something up, and we'll take a look at that. When he sent the, the renderings and stuff, I was floored by it, and I thought it would be something that would generate tons of chatter and generate lots of individuals coming into our area, you know, rain counters, supporting our local businesses, you know, there's gonna be more, if we put more kids in the park, there's gonna be more ice cream sold at Fairlane Diner, um, there's gonna be a lot of other things that purchased around town.
Water concessions, yes, too.
Yeah, concession stands and things up, along those lines, um, but that being said, he gave us a, uh, pretty, pretty awesome design, you know, for everybody that's out there, this is a thirty thousand, uh, feet view, it's the kind of the shape of a guitar, and then within the splash pad area, you've got saxophones, guitar, bass guitars, trumpets, foods, all kinds of different stuff, spraying water that kids can run through. Nothing against Southland Park, I've seen their splash pad, brings a ton of people to that area, and families love it, but it's essentially what most in-ground pools have, and it's just the pumps that spray the water, um, and it's, you know, it, it does its job, it's functional, but it's just doesn't have the awe factor. So we're trying to develop that area, we're trying to bring new businesses and people to that area, this would be one additional item that can do that, um, and just, I'm gonna try and wrap this up really fast, some of you are on Facebook, some of you aren't, but you know, for the ones that are on there, and to the extent that you aren't, there has been, for years and years and years, there's just tons of talk, and parents, they send me private messages, they talk to me word of mouth, they talk to me, uh, you know, by text, all kinds of different things, like about, and just post things in the open forums about, you know, when do we get a splash pad, can we have a splash pad, things like that. So, I've been for it, I hope everybody else is for it, this is a pretty good proposal, um, but I wanna hear what everybody else thinks in terms of this, and whether we can move forward with this tonight, like I said, I didn't get a chance to kind of take the temperature of everybody, that was my intention, but I didn't get to call all of you. So it sits on the, it sits on the table tonight, um, basically because we have, we're trying to move forward with Copper Tree, and put these two groups together to get this done, and, you know, next spring, boom, you know, everything opens up, so, discussion?
Mike, you spoke with the.
No.
I think it would be good to get us on the list for them to, to have, you know, start construction whenever they can, do us on the list.
This is a TIF project, this is TIF, TIF funds will be, yeah, we're gonna use TIF funds for this, um, as we move forward with them, you know, we can scale it, we'll just move forward with kind of what they designed right now, um, discussion, anybody?
Well, I do, on, uh, so when this gets put in, all that, how do we learn how to run it? I mean, what's the, do they teach you, I mean, maintenance, and is there a class, I mean, because, who's gonna maintain it?
So, when we were out there, it's pretty simple, the, the system that runs this, there's a pump that goes in the ground, and.
It's like a render pool.
It's like a time.
Just like, you, hours of operation, it's totally up to us, so we don't, this doesn't have to be a splash pad that's just.
Man.
It can be, there's a lot of different ways that we can, uh, move forward on this, but let me stick to Brett's question, or Trustee Hahn's question, uh, right now, so when I talked to him, and, and Mike did, there's a, literally a pump that's in the ground, access to it for our Public Works guys, or, you know, our staff, um, the question was initially, do you wanna do, just spray the water, and the water leaves, or, and it's gone? Or do you wanna recirculate it and treat it much like a pool, um, and that's the cheaper, that's the more economical way of doing it, and that is exactly what he suggested, he's like, you don't wanna just discharge the water in the sewer system and kind of, uh, do that, because the systems are so easy nowadays, the plumbing is nothing that's super outside of the realm, where you gotta be like this super skilled plumber, I think it's, I mean, and the way he made it sound is, it's pretty basic, and it's something that, you know, definitely our Public Works guys can fix, uh, really easily, but it would be a recirculating system, and it's not even a huge pump, and it's not like a huge reservoir, it's, it's a lot smaller than you would actually think when you think about this. Because it's just water sprayed, this is concrete, they do, this is basically, it's not a surface material like the, uh, the playground, this is concrete, it's, sprays water, catch basin, boom, and so there's not tons of water in the grand scheme of things coming through that system, that it's regen, and so it's just regenerating it, so, uh, that, does, does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, I just didn't know, you know, like I said, it's pumps and different things, they start breaking, and then, and even winterizing them for the, the end of the year, and how, what kind of maintenance is that, and, just like you said, I mean, I do have a pool, and if you don't winterize it right, pipes crack, and then you got a mess, and you're chipping concrete, and so, that's why I didn't know, how, do they kind of do this for a year with you, or do they just turn you loose and say, here you go?
No, I, yeah, I think that they're, they walk you through.
I mean, they would walk through, but they would understand it's no different than running your own pool, and making sure, of course, you blow all the lines out, make sure.
Right, that's.
I mean, we, we, we did that for a couple of years in the beginning at the Sherman Village Park, when the, you know, we were not yet in operation, yeah, through that process, any plumber, if you're this type of, it's pretty similar.
Yeah, I mean.
In-house staff, I mean, we got the best plumber out, and all the trades, and we got Bruce.
So does this also have a filtration system on it?
Yes.
I mean, he literally, so it's, he, he made it.
Public health.
It's as simple, almost as simple as a pool, essentially, kind of the concept of what he said, it was, when you look at it, you think it's much more elaborate than it is, but. What was his name?
Mike.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, put it in perspective for me, this, this is not rocket science, I mean, this is a pretty simple system, and, um, you know, it's easy to maintain, and the, the maintenance cost on it is, I mean, not much at all, you end up, you know, a lot of the harness, there's just, I mean, now if somebody broke one of the items in there, like the saxophone or something like that, like, that would be vandalism, that, that's not something we're going to Carter's, picking up a plumbing piece for, you know, that's.
Different than the.
Different than the.
For reusing the water, right?
Yes.
We won't get charged for sewer.
No.
Not sensitive.
Well, you're actually, that's, that's very true.
And this is gonna be fenced in?
Yes.
And how high is that fence?
Six feet. Yeah. We walked, that was another thing, we walked with the architect, and the whole area, and considered four feet, five feet, and six feet, and even talking to some of the fencing companies, everybody suggested six feet, so. The goal would be to fence the playground area, the goal is to fence all of this area, these would be control access points as well for concerts, these things can be controlled for charging fees if we wanted to, or, you know, like, somebody wants to rent it out, a daycare, a school, I mean, there's a, we've seen Springfield Park with the fans, bringing the summer clubs, the kids clubs out there, there's a, well, uh, we just had a bus actually, probably, it wasn't a daycare, but they've actually bumped our roundabout, and kind of cracked one of the locks or whatever, there's a lot of individuals out there, I talked to the mayor of Edwardsville, they do agreements with daycares and stuff like that to offset any costs that they have, but we fence it, we can put, you know, somebody to control the access, and, you know, allow Sherman residents free entry, or, you know, via season pass or something along those lines. So there's a lot of different things that you can do in order to generate revenue for something like this, you can have free hours, and you can have, you know, prime time hours, where you, if it's a dollar, you go in, or some, you know, two bucks, that'll set some cost, or maybe there's a season pass, like a lot of places do, but the, I mean, the sky's the limit with it, especially when you do fence it, but six feet is what everybody that we talked to actually recommended, especially for that big open area, the way it's situated. Anybody else have any other questions regarding it? Is everybody comfortable with moving forward on it this evening? Yes? Yeah? Okay, yeah? Alright, you're gonna do big things for the village of Sherman, and the families and the kids especially, um, we'll put this out on social media, and start generating a lot of buzz around this town, so, Trustee Gray is making a motion to adopt and, uh, you know, accept the proposal by Raindrop for the design plans and construction of this, of a splash pad at Sherman Village Park. Park. You've all gotten that information. Uh, is there a second? Second? No?
No.
No, I'm asking, is there a second? I need a second for the, the motion.
I will.
You will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Trustee Schultz seconds the motion. Uh, clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Again, with the measure receiving a, um, majority vote, could the clerk, could the clerk, could the clerk please record me as a yes as well? So, with seven members unanimously voting, uh, we'll bring this splash pad to the village of Sherman. Thank you everybody for your support. It's gonna be very, very, very good for our town. Item number four is an ordinance to purchase and finance police radios. This was included in our budget, you know, we funded this, put that in there. The chief spoke to everybody about it. Trustee Schultz made, and, uh, they need to update and, uh, purchase new police radios. Now, it's what, can you give a quick little, I mean, quick, to...
Yeah.
...update on what we're doing with this?
Yeah, we're replacing our original sparkarm radios, several of them, which we got on brand, the initial movement from the old GHS radio system to the sparkarm system. Uh, these radios function absolutely, they make the radio, and they don't make touch more anymore. So, it kinda led to the, the department's going to, uh, newer model, obviously. And, uh, the sheriff's office did theirs last year. We've actually been researching it for the last three years, checking up options and availabilities, so we did get, uh, a good price on the model that we did and we did get financing through UCB that was very favorable, good for the local software.
Okay, I'm gonna break up this thing. Okay, so we, we budgeted for this, I don't think there's much more discussion. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing that we need authorization to purchase and buy police radios, is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Tim makes a motion, is there a second? Second by Trustee Long. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members are voting yes, none voting no. The, uh, measure was adopted and we'll send it to the board's president. The next item, we're gonna do an executive session, the next three items actually, we're doing an executive session. Let's get to item number eight, which is a resolution. This is to support the grant application with the state of Illinois for a community development block grant. We discussed that already? Is that it?
Yeah, that's it. We'll also pass through...
What'd you say?
That's the next three.
Okay, so these all tie together. We just need to do this in coordination, that's what they all are on the agenda for, regarding this grant application. Anybody have any discussion regarding the next three items on the agenda? No? Okay. So, let's just, uh, let's pass the resolution to, for, support the grant application with the state of Illinois for a community development block grant. Motion's in effect. Motion's been made by Trustee Rockford, seconded by Trustee Hahn. Uh, clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no. The resolution's adopted. Next item, item number nine is the fair housing resolution ties in with this as well. Is there a motion to adopt the fair housing resolution? Motion's been made by Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee Hahn. Uh, clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no. The fair housing resolution's adopted, will be sent to the board's president. Item number ten, resolution, uh, for a partition, participation agreement with Schneider, Caston, doing business as, uh, Fairlane Diner for grant funding through the community, uh, block grant by Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion's been made by Trustee Tim, seconded by Trustee Long. Clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no. The resolution for community block grant with, uh, Fairlane Diner is adopted. Committee, Department,人事, there is none. Uh, police chief, Chief Mayor, anything?
Just one real quick, like, we did have a annual truder drill with, uh, Lingle High School today. Schools are probably, I wanna do a drill each year for that and for all the, the fire drills and severe weather drills and stuff, but we participated in that, we voted over these parts today, very well.
What kind of drill was it?
Truder.
Oh.
Any questions regarding, uh, Chief Mayor? Okay, uh, Sherman Emergency Management, Mr. Moes?
Available for questions, no report.
Questions regarding emergency management issues? Nothing? Public Works. I just told them about, mm, three o'clock to the staff and, or two o'clock, whatever it was, go ahead and take the evening off. You know, they've been working hard and everything, so they have the evening off. There is no new business coming forward, old business, we're gonna table that, there's gonna go act on that for now. There's no civic organizations seeking comment or moving forward. Uh, we're gonna move the public comment period to the end of the meeting, 'cause we're gonna go into executive session, right? 'Cause we're gonna come back and actually do things. So, meeting to go into executive session, hopefully this is about fifteen minutes of executive session, come back and adopt these, leave things, and then we'll get out of here. Um, that being said, so, executive session's on the agenda, we're gonna resolve ourselves into executive session as allowed under five, ILCS one twenty slash two, C one, two, and five of the Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion to effect? Trustee Hahn makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, you go by aye.
Trustee Rockford?
I'm sorry, clerk, would you please call a roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Hahn?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Six members voting yes and none voting no. The board will resolve itself into executive session, we're gonna give ourselves about fifteen minute timeframe. I'm gonna ask everybody to, um, clear the chamber, if you're gonna come back in, we are gonna adopt, uh, the salary ordinance, the extension of the labor agreement with